It is 6:30 June 3rd, 2024. Welcome to the Nottingham Board of Selects Annual Monday Meeting. We're going to start with the President Allegiance.
I.
I.
By the way.
By the way.
To the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which stands.
One nation.
Under God.
In this little liberty and justice.
Our offer.
All right. Does anybody have any questions about the payroll?
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable. Did you have a question?
No, no, no.
I was kind of bleeding up like I thought somebody was going to say, "Hey." No one said anything. I was like, "All right."
This is called manifest.
The accounts payable and payroll for May 28th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor? Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Morn.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
Next.
I have some minute changes.
On the minutes? Okay.
On line 170. I think we could just, we should change that to, so when parked at the gate illegally, or beach gate or something. Because it was, was not the, we know the boat launch, we can't ticket, but we should be able to at the beach gate. So it kind of got munged together.
We technically could ticket anybody that's parking, I think, on Deerfield Road at the top of the boat launch.
Right, right. We can ticket people there. We can't ticket at the launch itself.
Right.
Then on line 186. I think at the end of that sentence, we need to add something like, because of the private road for the driveway.
Right.
On 196. A woman. Should be Charlotte Fife. Line 214. Rick and a lady, identity inaudible, is Autumn and Debbie Ricker. And those were the changes that I had written down.
Does anybody else have any? Seeing none. Anybody want to make a motion on the minutes for the 5:23 meeting?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for the May 23rd, 2024 meeting.
As amended.
As amended.
I'll second.
Steve abstaining or going?
Abstain. I was not here.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Morn.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Matt Schrelin abstain.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
And I'll also make a motion to approve the non-public minutes for May 23rd, 2024.
So I had one question there. So where it says, "Board briefly reviewed a document submitted to the VOS by the town attorney and agreed to table it for another meeting because of, most members had not had a chance to review it," is because we went in with "I" instead of "L," so we couldn't discuss it?
Yes, you are correct.
Anything else?
I make a motion to approve the minute, the non-public minutes from May 23rd, 2024 as amended.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Steve Welch abstain.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Morn.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Matt Schrelin abstain.
Boards, Nottingham Planning Board meets next Wednesday, I mean this upcoming Wednesday. So I have nothing really to report. And then I haven't been actually to the recycling centers because I've been working Saturdays, so. So in case anybody else has, does anyone have any information? Fire away. But we can talk about some other stuff later.
Yeah, sure.
So. Any other boards want to report in?
Nope. CIP, we're still looking for July-August timeframe.
Cool.
Budget Committee, we're scheduling our meeting with the New Hampshire Municipal Association at some point in late August, something like between two Thursdays, so. And then for the rec department, they did get their 18-hole sponsors for Disc Golf at Marston, and I think we'll be discussing that at our next meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, yep. Bridgette and Courtney are coming in on the 17th to talk about starting the construction phase of that.
All right.
Nice.
They have 111 children signed up for the summer rec camp at this point. And then their after-care registration after school starts on June 18th, and that fills up extremely quickly. So if members of the public are interested in after-school care for the 2024-25 school year, I'd recommend you go to their website on June 18th and sign up. And then Saturday, June 15th, from 10:00 to 2:00, they're having the community yard sale and plant swap here at the community center. So the yard sale, I believe you have to go online and sign up for a booth if you want to participate in the yard sale and sell your wares.
And plant swap?
Yes, you bring a plant that you'd like to swap with somebody else. Could be in a bag, could be potted, could be not potted. You could bring seeds and think it's a future plant.
Do you just do that out of your car?
What's that?
Do you just swap out of your car for that?
People they gather, he has a few drinks and conversation about the plants, so you know you're planting. So again, that's a week from Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. That's about it from the rec department.
All right. That covers everything. Let's move on to our Town Administrator Report.
Just updates. The Highway Department, the grader was put back in service today. Road grading was to commence on Ledge Farm Road. They did find an antifreeze leak, so it went in about mid-morning for repair. It should be back out tomorrow morning to continue the work on Ledge Farm Road, and then they're moving on to the lake roads, starting with Barderry and then working their way across the lake. So those lake roads that have been long awaiting will receive some grading treatment here in the very near future. Officer Sam LaMay has passed part-time police academy. She is out of state for some military training this month, but she'll be back working shifts part-time with the department around the Fourth of July holiday. Chief Woodman has a conditional offer out for one of the two vacant full-time positions, so we're hoping that that's successful and they'll be closer to full staff sooner than later. The Town's Hazard Mitigation Plan update is nearing completion. The last meeting was on May 21st. The committee met and we just reviewed the tail end of it to pull all of the information together. And then, once the plan's been updated, it'll be circulated to you for your approval and then it goes on to, it used to be Homeland Security could approve the local hazard mitigation plan, now it needs to be approved by FEMA. So it will take a little bit of a process, but hopefully we'll be seeing that come to closure and then we can work on updating the Town's Local Emergency Operations Plan, which is the next in the queue. We have to secure some grant funding to do that, but these are plans that should be reviewed and updated at least every five years. So that's what we're working on through the Town's Emergency Management Director.
What was the, what was approved?
Nothing's been approved yet. We're working on the Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Sorry, Hazard Mitigation, thank you.
I got a pleasant call from Primex last week. They reviewed the invoice for the well repair at the recycling center and determined that even though they don't normally do anything underground, a lot of the expense came from having to replace the, the holding tank, the pump, some plumbing fixtures, et cetera. So they were, of the $12,000 repair for the well incident, they covered $9,555. So that was.
Where was the well?
At the well, the well at the recycling center.
Thank you.
Just following up on last week's meeting, I did reach out to the State of New Hampshire Dam Bureau with the concerns that were noted about the signage that's missing at Jones and Dolph Dams, and they are going to be reinstalling that signage. They know that it had been pulled down, but they're not.
Did they take it down?
They did. Well, I don't, I don't know that he necessarily said that it, I think he said it had been taken down and it just hadn't been replaced.
No, it's actually been vandalized and it was pulled down.
It was pulled down, okay.
The email made it sound like they took it down.
So we was there for years and then people been, we moved there because they want to go to the dam. It's a damn thing.
So somebody else had reported to the Dam Bureau the same concerns prior to me, so they were already on it and the signage replacement will be coming soon. And just for an update on the Marston well, we've been awaiting the approval of our application to accept it as a public water supply. The one thing that was missing from the application process is we needed to provide them with a site plan of the property, which we gave them the conceptual plan, and it needed a standard water quality test. And from that point forward, what they do is they set up their annual and quarterly testing requirements. So that was the last step in the approval process. That's been submitted. They are a little bit backlogged over at DES, but just for reporting purposes, the results of the water testing were satisfactory. So hopefully we won't have any issues with getting that approved as a public water supply and being able to turn on the, the water bubbler that's been installed over there and also having it available as a resource if we need it. For action items, there is, in the signature file, there's a petition for license utility pools. New Hampshire Electric Co-op is putting in an application for three new pools on Lamprey Drive. It's actually the section now identified as Channel. It's related to Kevin Bassett's properties. So I'm just looking for a motion to approve that license.
Do you want it now?
Oh, you want it now? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the application for the three new poles for New Hampshire Electric Co-op on Channel Road.
I second.
Motion is second. Any questions? Seeing none. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Morn.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
And as previously reported, I think at your last meeting on May 23rd that I was absent at, the Recycling Center staff circulated a petition to their patrons. They've collected 327 signatures supporting a year-round schedule of nine to five on Thursdays rather than transitioning to the summer hours. The staff would be willing to open earlier. They, they're pretty much telling everybody now that if the gate is open at eight o'clock, they're there prepped and ready, so if people need to come in sooner than the nine o'clock. So they are willing to open earlier and also potentially accept some patrons on Monday mornings while they're prepping for Thursday's reopening during the week. They're, they're obviously cleaning up and getting the center ready for container swaps, et cetera. But I just wanted to put this out there, that the Town's current operating plan on file with New Hampshire DES states that the Recycling Center is open to the public Thursday, Friday, Saturday between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. The above referenced hours may be revised upon the discretion of the Town of Nottingham, however, the hours must stay within 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So we're already somewhat out of those guidelines, but I think because it's on a seasonal basis. And again, this is just our operating plan. It's part of our DES solid waste permit, so the plan hasn't been updated since 2013, so that's something that we have to keep in mind, but also just for consideration purposes.
But we've been doing this for.
We have been doing this.
Longer than that.
Absolutely. So just, I, I know that it was discussed at the last meeting and I would like to request your consideration of either maybe posting a poll. We can post it to the Town's website with some selected options. I mean, the petition that they put out was very specific. It was, you know, would you be in favor of Thursday's nine to five year round?
Yes, petition to keep Thursday hours, nine to five, pretty much.
Right. And of course, I gave you a copy of the petition. So I would like to either put a poll out there so we can get some public feedback for what options you would be looking for if we were considering a change, or perhaps maybe schedule a public hearing where we can hear the public's input on what they would like to see if we implement a change. But this is something that's coming forward from the staff. It's been several years since it's been changed. There are other options.
So the Monday morning, though, the coming to swap.
They're not, they're not coming. So Monday morning, what they're doing is they're doing a mass cleanup from the activity that took place in the prior week, the container swaps. We order them either on Saturday afternoon or first thing Monday morning, but the swaps don't actually take place. The Highway Department might take the aluminum cans, but that's minimal impact. The household trash gets taken on Thursday, and then the rest of the container swaps take place usually on Wednesday or Thursday. Sometimes, like this past weekend because of the, the holiday delay last week, the household trash didn't get taken until Saturday morning. So for the most part, it's not an issue. There might be, if we have baled materials, whether cardboard or plastics, those might go out early in the week, but that's maybe once a month.
That'd have to be addressed here too, right? Except mentions this center is open to the public on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so if they did come in on Monday or any other day.
Correct.
We would just have to address.
Right. And if it's like, maybe a bunch of people are going to want to show up on Mondays and, you know, it's kind of like, how do you advertise that?
Right. It's either got to be open or not.
Right. You can't just say, "We'll be open if we're here."
Wait a second. We are not open on Monday.
Correct.
It is not for the public to put any trash in on Monday. That is how it rules. That is what it is. We are not having a discussion tonight on whether that's going to be okay or not. We'll let, we'll address that with the public, but for right now, we'll.
Well, no, but I think that's, we're just talking about.
We're having a conversation.
Yeah. Well, I mean, should we have that conversation as a public opinion? I mean, we're starting talking now. I mean, more than just having it, it's not on our agenda as an item to be discussed. So if we're talking about changing hours and having things change, I think the public should be involved.
Oh, definitely.
And it shouldn't be us having a discussion tonight.
No, I agree.
So that's why I'm saying, I don't want the discussion tonight. I want to say, "Let's put it on the agenda to."
And that's what I'm looking for.
The due diligence, I mean, those guys put 300 something people. I'll give them credit for doing what they did there, you know, and for, I mean, if we're going to look at what that operations in there to go meet the state, you know, the stakes from six to six.
Can you find out if that's even?
Yeah, where does?
If the state is saying it's six to six, can you just find it?
We have to submit an operating plan, so it's just, you know, this is how we plan on operating the facility, and it goes hand in hand with our licensing requirements. It's something that we have to have file on, with, on file with New Hampshire DES. So obviously, this can be amended. This is, we had, I think it was CMA that did the last update on this.
Right. Obviously, it was wrong because we'd been doing that for years and.
But we can change it however we want.
Well, that's my question, because the way, the way it reads.
Right.
Is like you can do.
Revised upon the discretion of the Town of Nottingham, however, the hours must stay within 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Like, was that the Town that decided that?
That part sounds more state driven.
Right. Who, where did that come from?
Who knows?
Right, exactly. Where, what, right. What's the source of that?
Things, could we just find it? Because if we're going to be putting it out there to be open until seven, then it's not even a possibility anyway.
All right, I'll find out.
Thank you.
And I think, there's a lot of good work here, 300 something signatures, but how many people didn't sign it or did not want to?
Well, if you're coming, if you're coming to the recycling center on a Saturday, what do you care what it's open on Thursday?
True. But there could be 500 people that didn't sign it because they don't want to change it.
And we have, we have three weeks of Thursdays now?
Yeah. And not even supper time yet.
Right. So.
What do you just want to put it on the agenda?
Well, I think we should do it as a public hearing, but I think we need to find out what the possibilities are for us for hours so we can present to the public what we can actually do.
Yeah, no, I agree that.
I think a survey online, to be honest, I'm not sure if that's yet.
Right. I was thinking that if we did a survey, we would still need to do a public hearing, but the survey would maybe kind of help give us some guidance towards the hearing.
I don't think it would hurt to do both. I don't think it would hurt to do both.
Well, what I could do is I could put a poll or a survey on the Town website. We can inform the public that we're doing so and then schedule a public hearing for the first meeting in July, which would be.
July 1st.
July 1st. That gives it three weeks exposure.
Perfect.
Four weeks.
Exactly what I was, perfect.
That's what I was looking for. Action forward, thank you. All right. Under General Mail and Correspondence, I gave you copies there. And the Board of Selectmen Public Comment email account, there was an email from Lori Anderson received regarding the pole pad and ballot counting machine demonstration that's scheduled for June 18th. That's here if you are interested in attending just to see the, the new ballot machines.
Is this both options or is this, we've, we've selected one?
No, I don't think we've selected one. I think it's only the one option. Let me just double check.
OHS.
It's the machine, it's the Lake Beaches machine that we haven't seen yet, and then the pole pads, which are totally going to be. Thanks, Moderator, Don.
You're welcome.
Okay.
There was email correspondence from Bill Garnett regarding the Veterans Memorial relocation at the library. When we potentially put in the new septic, we are going to have to move that from its existing location, that in the flagpole, but they are not to, I just clarified that they're not to be removed altogether. They're just going to be relocated once we can figure where the septic is and then in relation to the new parking lot design that's going to be taking place. But they will remain on that property. They'll just have a, a new designated area.
Yeah, because I read that. I didn't even have a clue. I was like, "What were we reading this for?"
And then Eric Jennings had followed up. I guess there was a question about requests for property owners to receive fill at their property, and he had sent the link to where that is on the website. So that was a request that was put up by Steve Rollins, the Highway Director. We had done something similar when we were doing the chipping of the brush on the roadside. So they signed a liability waiver, and it's only delivered, the materials only delivered in, like, in proximity to where it's being removed. So it's not like we're hauling it across town or.
And, and I did touch base with Steve too on that, and he confirmed that it was materials that they couldn't use. If there's stuff that they can use, they keep and put aside or whatever.
And then regular mail that came in, New Hampshire DES sent out a notice they're going to be doing dam reconstruction. They submit an application for Mendham's Pond.
Didn't they?
I thought they redid that a couple of years ago, right? Yeah. Because I remember it was, there was no, right, there was nothing. Yep.
And then I copied you on the letter.
They did say that they've tried to fix it a couple of times in there. It says like.
Yeah, it's not a, it was, like, I thought they rebuilt it because as they did too. There was nothing. The pond was empty for a year.
Is this a dam or where you started?
Yeah, Mendham's. Mendham?
Mendham.
I don't know what you want to say, yeah. Other side of town, North Route 4.
They're repairing it again?
That's a notice of dam reconstruction, so they haven't started anything. They're just noticing.
Earthen, it's an earthen dam, right? Which is what they're talking about.
And the last thing was, I just copied you on the letter that I sent to Kevin Smith, who is the Technology Director at Nottingham School regarding their, their grant for security upgrades to take place at both the school and the SAU office at the Old Town Hall, just acknowledging it's per the lease agreements.
Anything else?
That is it for my report.
Very good. So script of short assessing, we'll go take care of that right now before our seven o'clock appointment.
I make a motion to approve the land use change tax bill and warrant for land use change tax for map 14 lot 15.
Second.
Uh, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Morn.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
And I make a motion to approve the intent to cut Wooder Timber on map 14 lot one, I mean, sorry, map 74 lot one.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Morn.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
Did you call three? Hmm? What's that? Yeah.
He said the first one is. I got you.
Sorry. That's okay.
Uh, we'll go back to the general business since we have an appointment for the seven o'clock tonight, and we're basically almost there. This is Tim Phoenix. Please come up to the podium here. Oh, Seth, whatever, that's with you. This is about the Nottingham Business Park located on Route 4.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tim Phoenix. My attorney at Hope for Phoenix, Coramian Roberts and Portsmouth. I'm here representing Nottingham Business Park and its principal, Tom Moulton, who's next to me. Behind me is Chris Anis, who's running the redevelopment project on there. You folks are probably a lot more familiar with the, this site and the history of it than I am, but suffice it to say, this is the failed USA Springs project that was approved in 2005. Building permit was issued in 2007. A building permit application fee of $114,000 was paid then. Eventually, the Town took it back via tax sale. Tom bought it about two and a half years ago for just south of a million dollars. He's in the process of completing, undertaking development of the property so it can be a useful member, if you will, of the tax role. We expect it to be very valuable and to add significant tax revenues to the Town. As Tom began to analyze and proceed to get it, the building permit updated, and I should state by the way that when he bought the property, it was his certainly understanding and belief that it was bought with the, the approved permits from back in the mid 2000s, 2007 range. I'll get back to that in a moment. And he, but he was told that there was a, a new, brand-new building permit application fee that would be owed, and it's just south of $122,000. Underlying all this is, it's been before you before. We were not here, I was not here. We appreciate the board taking it up before, I think it was on April 15th, and hearing us again today. The bottom line is that we think it's unfair and unreasonable to take 220-some-odd thousand dollars roughly in building permit applications for this project, which was begun but has not, as we all know, has not been finished. Tom is doing that. I have a couple of props I want to provide you with. I'll hand them to Ms. White. Thought I had six, but I may only have five here, so. This is the, I have the whole thing. This is the approved site plan for USA Springs back, it was approved by the planning board on 11/30/05. I've only given you the first page because that's the page that has the then planning board's approval. So this subdivision, and you can see on the first page as, as it's being handed around, the USA Springs building that's in the upper left of the main lot as depicted sort of on the center of this plan. That's what was approved in 2005, so there was, starting then, an approved subdivision plan. There is case, statutory law that says that plans that are approved, if they're built within five years with active and substantial construction beginning within two years, they're, they avoid any changes in zoning, et cetera. And we're not here claiming that that's the case, but we, we acknowledge that the original building permit expired. building permit expired, but the subdivision plan is registered and is still, as far as I know, active. One, two, three, four, five, six. I'm now passing around a copy of one of the applicable RSAs, which is 676:4A, and it talks about revocation of plans and plaits. I've taken the liberty of highlighting some of it and, you know, please stop me if you're trying to read it while I'm trying to explain, but section Roman numeral one talks about when a planning board approval can be revoked. Section Roman numeral one D does say that when the time periods specified in RSA 67039 have elapsed, and that's the statute that provides for a five-year vesting if active and substantial construction has been started within two years. But then if you look at section two, Roman numeral two, it says that prior revocation, the planning board must have given notice and have a hearing, which hasn't happened. So our position is that the subdivision and the buildings that were approved are on it, they've been recorded, they've been approved, and they have not been revoked, so they're still good. Now, that leads us to what you're probably going to say is, well, we had a building permit and that has expired, which we acknowledge, but we'd like you to just take note of that. And then I have, and you've probably all seen this as well, more than I have. This is the Town of Nottingham's fee schedule. It's right in your ordinance. But I just wanted to point out that under, on the first page, down towards the bottom, it provides a permit renewal fee, which is $25. And it's my thinking that under the circumstances, although it's been quite a lot of time, that the proper application of the select board's decision-making to this should be that Tom bought it, took it off the hands of the town, granted with intention to develop it and both make a profit and provide tax revenues to the town, but the subdivision is, in my opinion, still valid, having not been revoked. So we're not understanding, there's nothing in here that talks about nor was able to find in a quick look what is meant by a renewal. I didn't find anything that says it has to be renewed while it's still active. So we think that the appropriate application here, and by the way, as an aside, I certainly understand and respect the select board's review of this back in April and the sentiment that, that, you know, that in your, based on your position, to be fair to the public or somebody else coming forward, it should be paid again. We respectfully disagree with that for the reasons I've stated. Tom has offered, and may I renew that offer?
Sure.
Yeah, had offered through the building inspector as a compromise, if you will, to pay what he thought was fair, which is 20% of the 100, roughly $122,000, which we think would both be fair, given the fact that we've got a subdivision that's not revoked, fair with a permit renewal price of $25, which my letter to you back in April offered 25 times, I think it was 15 or 16 years, but Tom would significantly increase that. So again, back to my initial comment, and Tom may have some, we think that since such a substantial fee was paid of $114,000 back around 2007 or '08, that it would be unfair to the owner and the developer to charge another $121,000 roughly for $122,000 for a project that's been begun. The building's up, skin's on it, right?
I know, roof is on it.
Roof is on it.
Roof decked.
But it has been started, so we're asking for the select board's reconsideration of their decision back in April. Happy to answer any questions. I don't know if there's anything you want to add.
Yeah, well, what I'd like to see, I mean, to me, I think morally and ethically, it's kind of, I think unfair to do double dipping. I just don't think that's right personally. When I bought it from the town, nobody bid on it. I was the only one that put a bid on it. I worked with Mr. Sturdaugh, I think was the town, yeah, Chris rather, and we came to an agreement and I bought it from the town, took it off your tax roll. And I have to tell you, when COVID was going on, construction costs, interest rates, I can get all the economic factors, why you can get going on this right away. And it's still, the interest rates are ridiculous. But also, when I bought the project, it was substantially complete, this building. The site work is substantially complete in the building, foundation and structure is somewhat substantially complete, and I just want to finish it. Now, this is not maybe a good way for us to get off, you know, I don't want to be acrimonious with the town or anything, but I'm also looking to develop the other part of the land with a business park, which is going to give the town some significant revenue. And I will tell you, the significant revenue is also a significant risk on me. I'm borrowing this money with the hopes that I'm going to get a tenant. I don't know who the tenant's going to be, I don't know what's going to happen with it, but I'm trying to invest in the town. And I would appreciate if you guys would take that into consideration, that I'm trying to make good up here and really do a good job out there to make you proud and to give you some tax revenue. And I just, it just irks me, I'll just be honest, I'm a very honest guy right up front. I think double dipping is wrong. What I did with the number that there was paid for the building permit, I threw in what I thought was a fair interest rate so the town could get some interest on $114,000 that was paid. And I just multiplied, that's how I came up with a number. And I think that's fair. And I think hopefully you got, you know, the board here will be fair with me as well so I can make this project work. I'm taking a lot of risk and I really want to try to make this work. I like Nottingham. It's not, you know, in Portsmouth, it's not Concord, in the South Utes, but I'm trying to draw some business here. And that's, I've always liked doing commercial real estate. It's a risk, but I need some relief, need some help, and that's what I'm going to ask you guys for.
To be clear, what was the offer amount?
20% of the 100, 1,800.
It was $24,380. 360, sorry.
$24,360 a year.
Right. Which is an interest rate on 114, so you guys are going to end up netting about $130,000 bucks and look at, well, you know, you would have got that income and look at the big picture. When the building's done, you're going to get a big tax revenue out of it. That's, my friend does a lot of work in Dover, they work really well with him, they help him, our board in Dover recognizes when he builds something, the town does very, very well, and that's what I can bring to the town, so.
I've been on the planning board for a long time, so I've seen you quite often.
Well, yeah, I've been here for a little bit.
Right. Exactly.
Don't hold that against him.
I recognize you too, John.
So, yeah, when the sale happened, I was here also. Probably been here too long now, if you ask me, but that's another story. I mean, I appreciate the offer. You know, we're stuck between also taking care of the town and the citizens, and I understand what you're going through and what the future is, and I've seen the plans of what potentially, and I'm going to say potentially, could happen, because like you said, there's a risk in the management, you know? This could be the only building, maybe the park doesn't go, I don't know, maybe something happens. Lot of, lot of future things we can say that could possibly happen that don't happen. So we got this one particular building that I wouldn't call it close to being partially. When I saw it, there was this metal frame and that was in a cement slab and it wasn't very, um...
It wasn't attractive because it's rusty.
Right, yeah, it wasn't looking that, that great. Well, you just mentioned that it looked, you know, some work, but it was really shell. Yeah, very rough shell.
Yeah. But if you look at the cost of construction, steel, erection, foundation, there's a substantial amount of work that's been done.
Yeah, everybody, yeah. You know, and this is a, something that's, you know, we don't come across every day. The fact of what you, the points you pointed out of building it and, you know, increasing the value of it for a tax revenue for the town is something we should weigh into consideration. You know, as people have been saying for years, you know, something that Nottingham lacks is any type of industry, any type of business in order to create some other source of tax revenue besides basing it all on people's homes and, you know, the smaller businesses.
It has been 20 years though.
Yeah. That's again, I'm, I mean...
And we probably have invested a fair amount of money into litigation of that property. I wouldn't really consider it double dipping.
Right, and we should all...
Based on our costs.
In the process.
That's not my fault, I took it off the town's.
It's not our fault that you, we're looking for you to renew the...
What's that again?
It's not really our fault that you are faced with another permit either.
Yeah, when I bought it from the town, I think it was implied and inferred that I would get the approvals with it. I mean, I'm just saying, that's the way...
Was that in writing?
What, I'm sorry?
Was that in writing?
No, but it was implied, I think that I was buying an already permitted building, it was already under construction, site was existential. Look, you talk about speculation, you want that to get developed, I'm your guy. I can get it done. You talk about the industrial part of it, I've already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on engineering to explore all the opportunities. I'm just not, you know, that's out-of-pocket cost, you know? So I think what we got to do is look at, when I bought it, the economic conditions and where we are now. But I do think that double dipping is not, I just feel that way. I'm trying to at least give you some interest on the money that you got, which I think is more than fair. It's my opinion, and you can disagree.
And it's pushing 20, but not quite, 16.
Wasn't quite a million either, but we were pushing it when it said it cost a million.
Yeah, I was the only guy that...
It's south, just south of a million.
Either way, right, hey! That's a lot of money.
Oh, point made.
And we also need to consider that part of your argument was the renewal process should have been only $25 per year and according to our, what are these?
Zoning ordinance.
The building ordinance?
Zoning.
The zoning ordinance. You can only renew once.
It only says you can renew once?
We're only doing it once. It's just...
No, no, in the first year. You can only, you only get your first year for renewal. It's a one, so if you don't finish in your first year, you can renew for the second year. It doesn't keep going 25, 25 forever.
Not sure, I think, where are you reading that right now?
It's in the zone.
Yeah, it says only once. And I was pretty certain this was in there.
What is that document? I'm sorry.
It's the Town of Nottingham zoning ordinance.
Do you have a section of that that I can look at?
Yep, it's section R on page 33.
Do I give my copy?
Yeah, I meant to bring my ordinance, but I forgot.
And building permits are not transferable. And this has probably been this way for like a long time, before that property.
I'd have to go back through, that was the zoning ordinance that was last amended in March of 23.
Right, right, but it was this way like in 2000 for sure.
And we're after 2000, we, you know, we're '08. This does say it can be extended for health and financial reasons. I think this is financial reasons for the town that took it back and for a tax sale and then sold it for just south of a million dollars.
But it says for owner-occupied dwellings.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, I can tell you that based upon my experience, there was no way that this was going to be completed within a year. It's just the project too big for that, so, you know, again, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. I definitely feel for you and I appreciate what you're trying to do with the commercial property and I look forward to that being successful.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to be fair, you know?
That's what I'm looking for, some fairness here, I mean, really. I mean, think about it, one thing you talked about, the transfer of ownership. The town took it back. It wasn't like you sold it to me and then I sold it to John.
Right.
The town took it back, so it's not...
We didn't want it.
I understand. Well, you know what, I took it off your hands, all right? I did, I was the only one that stepped up and did it because I know when I was in the market, the town was very grateful, and I was grateful that we were able to put a deal together. So I think the theory applies when you say when it transfers ownership. This is an unusual case that the town took it back. It wasn't like I came and bought it from you and then John bought it from you. It's not the case. And I think you have to look at the circumstance. I would hope that you would look at that as a circumstance. The towns get some money out of it. They got some money on a building permit. I'm offering you what I think, interest on that money for over the 16, 15 years, whatever it is, so it can make everything whole. And then let me get the thing built and get some tax revenue out of it.
How much is the new, how much would the new full price be, I think?
121,800 according to my notes.
Are you changing anything from the original building permit?
Am I changing anything?
Yeah.
No.
The way the permit was written 20 years ago is the same permit it's going to be going today?
It's going to be the same.
Full exceptions, no changes, no nothing, straight to where it is.
It's going to be exactly what is the only thing that I, that I would have to do and I'm willing to do it. If there's anything in the building code that has changed, I am absolutely willing to adjust whether it's snow loads or whatever has to get done, so it will be to, let's call it to today's standards. Yeah, today's code. There's going to be no changes. Same thing with the site plan, the site's going to be, there's no change to the site.
Same, and...
All it, all, we're going right off the plans, doing the infiltration system, the stormwater drains, the roof drains, everything's the same, parking lot. And I'm doing this a lot at my peril, you know, because I, and I talked to Dale about this and I know that I'm doing this, I'm doing this without having put a certificate of occupancy. I'm gambling, I'm rolling the dice, because what I think doing, I want to bring a good tenant here, whatever that, whoever that's going to be, a good business to bring it in here. I've been very successful in the Seacoast. I know how to do this, done it for many, many years. And like I said, I'm going to do this understanding that I have to go back to the planning board to approve who is going to go in there. You know, somebody wants a new nuclear waste, it's not going to happen, I'm not interested in that tenant, town's not interested in it, we got to go get someone else. That's my problem. Just looking for a little help, that's all.
So once this is developed, are you planning on selling this or renting?
I would prefer to lease it and rent it, that's what I, that's what I want to do. It's much better because Uncle Sam's, that's putting his hands in my pocket and it's not fun, so I prefer to do that.
Is there a way that we could do something and then include payment for the rest of it through lease process once it's leased?
I think that's kind of having a clawback at the end. I'd rather just be right up front, write your check for $24,000, let me go do my thing. I got to go back to the planning board and think about the Oliver Nash, John, is maybe consider the revenue that you're going to get out of this building from the tax roll. It's going to be significant.
To follow up on Mr. Decker's question, I've been involved in pilots, payment in lieu of taxes, but my experience is limited and it's typically nonprofits that deal with it, churches and the like. Never in private have I seen anything like that.
So here's my, you know, after seeing this, I've seen conceptual plans of what possibly could be.
For this one or the second part?
The second part.
Okay.
You know, when the time of this acquisition of property was taken by Tom from the Town of Nottingham, the present board was quite excited about the purchase and about the future, the revenue and stuff like this. So when we were working with Dale, that that was something where we were eager to come to an agreement that was financially responsible for everything, for the town to acquire the money that it needed and for Tom to get the price in the deal that he was looking for in order to potentially make this a viable business opportunity for himself. Seeing the potential, this is where I, again, I'm trying to speak for myself right now from sitting on the planning board, seeing the potential that there could be four other buildings going out back, another roadway, and again, nothing to do with the town, it's all going to be taking care of the things. We're not paving a road, we're not doing anything. The whole apparatus, fireplace, we've taken by the wells, we've taken care, I mean, it's a good investment. So this is where I have a little bit of, you know, I'm trying to see where we could go in the future in that we have somebody that's been very successful in doing this kind of, you know, projects.
But I guess my concern is setting a precedent. I know we'd be making an exception if you have...
But are we ever going to have this precedent again where somebody's...
Well, if you have a developer that submits...
A housing developer, you say?
Or, for example, what about the poor guy who's doing some work on his house and he wants to do some renovation? who's doing some work on his house and he wants to do some renovation, and he stops it for, you know, some other reason other than sickness or health or whatever? And then, he's gotta pay his full, full amount again. You know, it's like, it's a renovation, you know, why, why are we charging full price for a renovation? You know, that's the thing that concerns me more, is that if we're gonna consider this a renovation, we should probably address our rulings around renovations versus new construction.
I wouldn't know by characters this is a renovation. I think it's just complete.
He's with you, he's with you.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand what you're saying, I do.
I mean, you have something, you have a shell there, it was there with a previous owner.
Yeah.
Now you own it, you need to renovate it, whether it's complete or whatever.
Yeah.
But it's still a renovation versus you're not starting from the ground.
Right.
The other thing, if I may add, Mr. Chairman, just to the comment that was made, I mean, I think it's, I understand, you know, fundamental fairness in the future, but the big difference has, has been mentioned is there was an intervening step here, which is the town came to own it because taxes weren't paid on it. So it's not like the homeowner who goes to work on his house or whatever and lets it lapse and then comes back. It was, Tom didn't have anything to do with it, the then-owner had everything to do with it. Town couldn't get them to pay, town took it back and then sold it, and I think that intervening factor, hopefully you would see a way to consider that as a mitigating factor that's different and not therefore fundamentally unfair to a homeowner or any other, even a a commercial property owner that has it themselves, starts and then stops and then starts again later.
I personally think it's very defensible, I understand your positions, the town, the community, the citizens, I get that. I think this situation wants a, like, say, common sense, fairness. You know, you could certainly notice like a permit was paid for, we took it back for fifteen years, it's off the tax rolls, this guy stepped up and bought it and always asks for some releases, willing to pay his interest on the money that was paid on the original permit. I don't think it's really unreasonable.
I'm not worried about setting a precedent, because I think it's case by case. And I think that, you know, I've, I've been around, you know, talked about setting precedents on things when you sat on zoning, by giving somebody something, or when you sat on planning and you give them a special exception for this right here. It's never come back in like twenty years to somebody that actually come back and say that you did it for one, you did it for the other. Because there's always something different about the scenario that it doesn't set the same precedent.
Yeah.
Do I think the twenty percent is a number that I'm happy with? No. Be upfront with you right there.
I couldn't live with twenty percent.
You know?
Nope. Could not.
But I'm just speaking for the, my opinion, I mean, feel free to, guys, we have our own discussions.
Hey, I, I'm one for the rules, so, you know, it's like, to me, it's cut and dry. It is what it is. You know, I don't like, I don't particularly like it percent, because I agree that there's some unfairness there. But it is what it is, and that's what I have to go by. Unless something else changes.
No, I would always look at, I always look at situations for the greater good. What really ends up, at the end of the day, you end up with a building, you're gonna get some significant tax revenue from. I think you should consider that, it's tough economic times, it's not easy. Right? I go to the bank, trying to get the interest rates, it's not easy, and if it gets too burdensome for me, maybe I'll just pull the plug and sell it, let someone else deal with it, and then it'll just go on. But I'm poised to make it happen, but I want some help, and I think I'd really appreciate if you guys would think about that. Make the greater good and the, and the right decision, I think morally and ethically, I've got a good point. You've already got paid for a building permit. And, you know, I, I think what I offered was fine, but you guys tell me.
Now, with your proposal, and this says one year, are you saying that you could finish in a year?
It's gonna be close, I'm gonna get it, the goal right now is to get it weather tight by November and December. That means the roofs, side windows, and clothes, so the structure can be protected. All inside has to be sandblasted, painted, all the drainage, all the infrastructure's gotta be put in. And then, right now, we will be marketing it. If I get a tenant, before then, I will continue on, it'll probably be a little north of a year, if I'm lucky enough to get a tenant. It could be, if I gotta sit and wait, why would I spend millions of dollars when I don't know what the tenant wants? You know what I mean? So, so I would get it to a point that now I can finish it, they might want underground plumbing, electrical, things like that. I'll tell you the one thing that scares the crap out of me, I don't know if you guys know, but electrical, switchgear and transformers. Do you know what the, what the, the delivery date on that is? Sometimes up to a hundred weeks, that's two years. Imagine sitting there with a building with millions of dollars, the meter running with the bank, and you don't have electricity? Not good, but I'm working very diligently to get something, you know, used gear or something, to at least get that done. There's a lot on the table, that's, I'm not trying to nickel and dime, I'm a very generous, kind, I get it. I'm not that kind of guy, I'm not trying to need to beat you up, but I need every, I need the town to help me.
Right, and I.
You understand what I'm saying, I really do.
And you're making great points to say that this one-year expiration, you know, one-year extension thing makes zero sense. You know, I, I think we have other issues that we need to address with zoning.
But I think that's, I think, that's.
Right.
That's.
That's a whole different.
No, no, but, I mean, but it's something that we need to do.
If I may, and I understand the point, that's what the words say, but, and I'm not, this isn't a threat, but I don't see any court anywhere saying, despite diligent efforts, he couldn't do it in a year, and you guys wouldn't give him more time? I, I just don't see that happening, and I don't, I don't wanna go there, but, you know, there, there's ways around that. I mean, if, if he shows that he's, you know, despite due diligence, let's say he can't get the electric, and he needs another extension of a few months. You know, I just, you know, hopefully we won't need that, but I just don't see it being fair to say somebody that an arbitrary date was picked back, probably was two thousand or so, when construction times, construction expense, all that stuff, a lot less red tape, things could be done in a year, but I can't, I'm, in the Seacoast, you're not getting a house built in a year nowadays.
Yeah.
So then, just another.
Nobody has more incentive to get this thing done and rented than they. All right, 'cause my name's on, you know, I gotta write the check every month in the bank, so nobody has more incentive to get it done as soon as possible.
So was originally pulled, approved by the planning board, just a shell, and then if they, does the inside have, like if he leases to Amazon, or if he leases to a small business, like a plumbing company, that the inside would be petitioned differently? Do you have to then re-approach, get a new permit to configure the inside?
No, I think what it was, it was approved, our USA Springs applied for it, I think there's a full set of plans to, you know, to get, yeah, answer your point, Matt, I, so I think what happens, once it gets done, I'd have to get an occupancy permit for the town, so I'd come between the town, planning board, say, look at, Amazon wants to come in, this is what they'd like to do on the inside of the building, the sprinkler system's proper, you gotta, you know, get that done properly, to whatever they were gonna have inside there. And then the town, yep, we'd like to have Amazon, you know, we look at the traffic from trucks and things like that, to get a C O. If it's something they don't want, then I gotta let it go and go to the next person. Maybe a manufacturer, I talked to, been talking to Sig Sauer, is one of the options, to do some manufacturing in there, which could be great.
Now, I'm just curious, would he be back for another building permit, another cost for the next phase of it, or is it, is like?
Yeah, what he's talking right now is just for this particular building.
To the, for the shell?
Anything else he's gonna go for is a whole different.
That's questions for inside.
For like, because it's a shell, but then you're gonna need a permit to reconfigure the inside.
And then what do you do, get another full permit?
They already had plans and everything, yeah.
That's what I.
Because it's based on square footage.
Correct, that's what I'm trying to figure out in, these, this together, it's a little different than a house, right? When you, when a house is approved, is approved as a three-bedroom with a plan, this is approved as a shell, but then if you come in and then you wanna develop that into a further thing, what is the second step happening?
Matt, if I could, just to inject, there's a full set of plans, the USA Springs had, it had offices, it had a gym, it had a cafeteria. That's what the building was, uh, building permit was paid for on that being approved. That will be certainly subject to change. You know, the inside configuration, to your point, but the building permit that was paid for was based on that building, not just the shell, but the inside with the offices were, you know, the gym, the cafeteria, things like that was finished, and that's what was approved for. Now, if that's subject to change, and it's more, let's say, it caught, it's more value, I would expect to pay the delta of that. So like if it's X number of dollars, I'd pay the, uh, an additional fee for the building to, if it's more work. I wouldn't certainly get a credit for it, but that's already been done, but that's, I was approved.
The chair asking, are you gonna build what was approved, and that is the intent. I'm speaking for you, so kick me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
If that's not built and some change is made, that would be a, a different add-on application for, you know, instead of one big, you know, open space, if it's cut up into four spaces, new walls, you know, three sets of bathrooms, two kitchens, all that, all that would be a separate.
So the plumbing application, the electrical application, all that, you're gonna pay those fees?
Yeah, oh yeah, the subs would absolutely do that when we know what we're gonna do, yes. Oh yeah, that's above a million.
Anything he does on this property besides this building is subject to all new fees.
That's the point.
I would agree, I agree with that.
There's no.
Electrical, plumbing, all those.
There's no carryover from this.
Correct.
Other than the building.
The building itself, the shell, the inside.
That would be.
Does that make sense, Matt?
It does, I'm just trying to figure out, like, based off what he's offering, where does that take us to, and then what's gonna need to be done, again? Just piecing it together in my head.
You would, you would get plumbing fees, the plumbing, your electrical fees, your electrical, absolutely, yeah.
But then if he comes back and changes the design inside, because one's a warehouse or one's a office, then that's gonna have to be a re, new planning board approval.
No, no, because again, it's, the building is more for the square footage of what he's, what he has. That's where we're really going on, it's the square footage that is being built on, so it's not just this.
You get someone like Sig Sauer in there, for example, there'd be a lot of electrical work, there'd be a big fee to do that. For example, that's, sorry, John, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I apologize.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, again, I'm thinking about, you know, I'm happy to finally see a plan or to see Tom here, uh, in front of us with something going on with this project. I mean, it's been many years since he's owned it, and we, we have a lot of designs, a lot of conceptual plans, or, and this, and the buildings has stayed the same way, and the, the yard stayed the same way, it's probably, it's well overgrown since I visited it eight years ago, or whatever it was, so it's, um, I mean.
So why hasn't this issue been brought up in the past?
Because he hasn't, because he's actually moving forward with doing something, I mean.
I spent a lot of money just the engineering, and the concept that you saw, John, once I get this building in and I get it leased, or if I have to sell it, I mean, it's gonna be an economic decision at some point, I plan on taking the revenue and putting it right into the road, I already got the site guy lined up, and we're, I'm talking with Scott Frankowitz. Him and I are gonna meet in another couple of months, once we get this thing off the ground, take, go to the planning board this fall with the next phase, and that will be the next thing, to do the road, and we have to do a cistern, we have to do, we have plenty of water out there for sprinklers and domestic, not for bottling water, but for just using. So.
That's went over quite a.
But there's plenty of water for the sprinklers and all those kind of things, it will help. But the next phase is to, you know, like, build the road, get the infrastructure in, get the lots ready, start marketing it. I'm very well-connected in the commercial field, you know, Boston brokers, the Seacoast brokers, then I'll be able to get some tenants. And people, even owner-occupied buildings out there. It's, you know, it's a tough environment right now, a good friend of mine, we used to own pro-con construction, the guy who's slowly passed away, Mark Stevens, a really good friend of mine, he always said, build during the recession. Because by the time the recession's over and you come out of it, people will be ready to go. And so that's kind of a little bit of the theory here. I just couldn't do it with COVID, we had supply chain issues, you know, interest rates, steel was through the roof. Had one project that went up forty percent, it just, I killed it, I was gonna build some hangers of peas, and we just put the brakes on us, couldn't do it. Project went from twelve million to twenty million, how, how do you absorb eight million dollars in just steel costs? Just didn't work, so it shelved, but I got a couple hundred thousand dollars tied up in engineering. I gotta sit there and do this, till we figure it out. But I can make this go, I can, I can tell you, if you get the right guy to get that business part done.
Does anybody have a counter to his counter, or? Which could be full price or whatever?
John? Yeah, I've heard, well, aware that he spoke up, but I don't want this to be an open public discussion on this, this is a between the, uh, the client and the board of selection, not between everybody and their opinion on what we should do. We're voted here to make the decision for this situation, that's why we're sitting here.
Thank you.
So, I feel, because of the term of the thing, that it should be like a fifty percent, I'd feel comfortable at least getting that. Anything less than, I would say no. But again, that's just me speaking with you guys here. And I only would do that for the fact of, of what I've seen as a proposal for the future. And we might be taking, I mean, I don't think the town's taking a real huge financial risk on this. He's taking the financial risk, we could potentially getting a financial reward. With obviously some, you know, I mean, there's always gonna be some things, you know? But. Yeah, that's exactly what I'm.
John, thank you.
Said in a nutshell, but thanks for pointing that out there, too. So that's where I see this, you know, it's not like a development, where you have the house, the kids, the more population in town, I mean, there will be more, but it'd be over there. It is on a state route, Route Four. So, I'm fine, maybe. That's where, I mean, that's, I mean, I'm, I'm just, again, thinking out of the box, I'd like to see, because again, the excitement for when he did purchase the property, the excitement of what could possibly be the, the limited areas that we have in town that we actually, you know, call industrial. That's there, there really isn't anymore. So, I look at this more as hopefully an optimistic future of positive growth in a way that we've never really seen. So.
Got one question, John. Who's taking the risk and how much could it be?
Well, he's taking all the risk.
Every bit of it.
Yeah, we just had the whole discussion, I'm sorry you weren't here for some of it, but yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you said you're talking about there might be a downside, or it might be something we have to do, it's not you doing it, it's us doing it.
Well, I'm speaking as for a member of the community, as, when I say, I'm sitting here for that purpose, because I was voted to be a member of the community to sit here. So when I say me, we, whatever, I'm talking.
The town.
The town.
Who are your we?
So.
All right, so I would not be opposed to that. However, I would like us to follow up with reassessing this fee structure. You know, I'm not sure how we do that, I know that, right, I understand that, but, but I think there's issues here that need to get.
I, I particularly don't agree with what you're saying, but that's, that's for discussion. Because I know we're adjusting the fees, and we've adjusted the fees, and Nottingham's basically been more of a residential community, so these industrial, this, this thing here isn't there. As you see, everything listed, you know, I mean, here's commercials, we, they're bigger, I mean, we can make them bigger, but that's.
Yeah, but it's, so we probably need to, if he's gonna talk about building more commercial, we need to have that. We, these, yeah, I don't know, I, I don't think that these are.
He hasn't even came to the point where he's gotten a full plan in front of the planning board, too. He's only been conceptually presenting stuff in front of us, so.
So we, the town should be ahead of that, I guess is what I'm saying.
And that's what the planning board is actually, last meeting was doing for residential construction, we were actually going over all the fees that we're charging for contractors coming in, and what they're being paid per lot, what they're gonna pay per house, and those fees were actually addressed at the last planning board meeting. So I mean, we are being proactive in acquiring what the towns are doing for the fees. It's not like we haven't looked at this, this one here, again. You know, we're obviously not trying to, to make it so that it's unfeasible to build. You know, that's not fair to the applicants that are coming front, or even individual homeowner that has land that wants to build. that has land that wants to build. It's a step to get away.
You know, one thing I could just throw, throw out there, this is the first time I've seen, again, from my limited experience, there's a, there's a cost per square foot. A lot of towns usually do on a cost per thousand of value and they, so if you want to look at the fees charts, you might just want to consider how other towns may have done it. You know, I know Hampton, for example, does it per thousand and there's a fee associated with it.
Which logically makes a lot more sense, but.
Yeah, it's six, one half, there's another, but I think if your fees, I think Mr. Moore made a good sense, you want to make sure it's not onerous or you don't curb, you know, curbible, you know, you want to encourage it.
Right, I, I'm not looking to.
Sure.
You know. Just trying to make it kind of, basically reassess where we're at, because this, this to me doesn't make a lot of sense.
It's probably a good thing to pause and re-look at it.
So let's make a decision on his issue tonight.
Well, I threw out a suggestion, so y'all, everybody speak to what they were thinking.
I'm, personally, I'm comfortable leaving halfway, I was thinking halfway between the 50%, I was thinking 35% of the building cost, permit cost.
We like that better.
I mean, I recognize the worth, the money you put in, but at the same time, again, not as much of a rule, I'm a rule follower, but I'm not as a stickler as Mr. Decker.
Well, I'll tell you, if you wanted to go to the 35%, I would agree to it.
Yeah, I just, again, I feel it's an exception based upon obviously your explanation and, you know, John, I live a half mile from the property, so I have been driving by it since they broke ground on it originally, I'd love to see something better there, so.
You'd be very impressed with it when, the end of the fall.
I've seen some of the.
It's going to be beautiful, gunmetal gray, dark, it's going to be a beautiful showcase for the town.
And that's, Tim, but being the rule follower is why I suggested that we follow up with fixing the rules. You know, that's, I'm okay with doing an exception with a fix in place, but when we do an exception with no plan of action, then it's just an exception, a random exception.
So to put the numbers out there, he's offered $24,360, the full value is $121,800. Tim's proposal at 35% is $42,630. John's is $60,900 for the 50% of the value. So we're seeing numbers, not percentages, so people can hear a number of what it is.
Mr. Welch, what are your thoughts?
I couldn't live with anything under 50%.
Can I ask any specific reason why, other than?
It's expired, should be eligible for the full amount. I think even though they've paid the previous owner, it shouldn't come into effect at all. I mean, I think we've had, they probably didn't pay the back taxes, hence why we took it over, so we've got quite an investment in the property. So is it his fault? No.
I don't know what it cost the town, but it paid $950,000.
You probably, that's probably a pretty good deal though. I think it is.
I think it was a really good deal.
Oh, you could have bought it, no, I was the only one that stepped up, you know.
We did have a private citizen that offered us $400,000, which we totally rejected, just saying.
And I know the person that offered the $400,000, that's what I'm saying, I paid double what someone offered. So that money surely could have paid your legal fees, back taxes, things like that, because the town acquired it for, for lack of a better word, a tax sale, they got it for free.
You've got a pretty good deal, I think.
You want to buy it? I'll sell it to you.
I wish I had the money, I would.
All right.
Give you $400 for it.
I'm glad you had the money to buy it.
I had to borrow it, you know what I mean?
I think you've got a good deal.
You know what I mean? I don't make any.
Get back to the point.
No, I know.
Let's keep on with the subject.
Yeah, I know. I would really appreciate if you guys would consider the 35%. That's about $42,000, $43,000. I could live with that. It's double what I had offered. I'd appreciate if you consider it.
Somebody make a motion?
We're still in the discussion point.
I mean, we don't have to be unanimous on it, just, you know, we can make our discussion whether we vote one way or not.
Correct.
You know.
I would just hate to see the financially burden stagnate it, potentially wait, if, if it did go into sale and then you're just sitting for years more, just waiting for this thing to just do nothing.
It's a positive move forward for the town of Nottingham.
Correct.
That's how I look at it. You know, we have a new planning board and a lot of the new discussion that's been coming up was, how do we move forward with Nottingham to take the burden off, you know, what future developments and what's going to go on? You know, and this is the, the, really the only example we have for where we could, to potentially move on, you know.
And it can generally spring forth other, additional life for building, you get something in there, you get a good tenant, and then that tends to drive other people either near it that want to do something as well.
And I will tell you, once I get that tenant in there, or whatever happens, I will be developing that road and more lots out there right after, not going to sit on it and wait.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the exception, the building permit fee at 35%. What does that dollar amount mean?
Forty-two, of the, 35% of 121,800 is $42,630.
For $42,630.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion in a second. Discussion?
I still want to know what the plan going forward with these fees are going to be.
So I understand where you're going with that, but that's, I mean.
I understand it's a planning board thing, but we still.
It's not going to change the matter of what we make a decision tonight on.
No, but without a plan, I mean, I, I think we need to put a plan forward. So whether it's just an action item to, to do it or whatever, that's fine. But we need a plan.
I think, I think everybody's on board with that for the future.
And if, if everybody agrees to that.
Yeah, but we still have to go, that has to be all addressed, so it has to be put on the planning board in general. Then what's that discussion?
Exactly, that's, that's fine, that's fine, we can't decide on that tonight.
We can easily put that on the planning board schedule, we're already talking about it now.
I'm not expecting to, to work that out tonight.
Oh, well, if that's what you're saying, you want to put it on the planning board schedule for them to talk about it? Sure. Make a note of that.
Noted.
And I'll mention it when I'm sitting there Wednesday.
Okay.
This will be part of our discussion.
So there's a motion in a second to approve 35%.
$47,000, right?
$42,630.
Nay, Steve Welch.
Sure, yea, John Decker.
Nay, John Moore.
Yea, Tim DeBrio.
Asher, I'm aye. The yays and the nays might be confusing.
I, I.
Okay.
Three to two, I vote.
And just to make it clear, I mean, I was for helping decrease the price, it was just not as 35%, but, and I think Mr. Welch was the same way, so as a board, we do appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
You know, we're not against it by any means. So it was three to two at the 35%. So again, don't take, don't take this as, I mean, you know, because we're not 100% unanimous, but you know.
Listen, we compromised, it was a fair deal, I, I appreciate it, I tell you, I dealt me.
But I would like to see one in a year from now that's significant, that we're not going through saying, we just got a shell going and we're not.
Nobody's got a bigger incentive than me to make this work, trust me, I'm putting my heart and soul into it.
Now we got to show.
And you guys, I'm going to say I've done a lot of planning boards, Tim's been with me, Nottingham, it's been a pleasure, the people working, good, bad, or indifferent, everybody has their opinions, you have good debate, it's healthy, and, uh, I'll tell you, I've, I've done a lot of work in Hampton and I'm lucky I'm not bald. They drive me crazy, no, it is, it's unbelievable. I've done so much in that community and the fighting, it's crazy.
Alan, make sure this is noted to Dale and Alana.
Yes.
For the future, and that, again, this is only good for that one particular building. This is not, anything else that goes forward as a new plan is subject to all current or future fees, depending when he puts the permit in. So if the permits all change, when the prices go up, he's subject to the new prices.
Well, thank you very much.
Now I got to show up the planning board.
Appreciate it, Wes.
Thank you.
Very unusual thing.
You come sit in my spot on Wednesday. Good night, thank you.
Thanks again, guys, appreciate it, thank you.
Do you want to go on Wednesday?
I'll, I'll go.
He could be my, he could be the selectman representative.
I'll know, I don't want to do that because I don't know nothing about.
Well, that's a little longer than I thought, but, okay, now we're going back on to general business. Is there anything else anybody needed added?
It goes with this.
To that?
Well, I mean, that's, that's over and done, we're all good. All right. Uh, general business, the only thing we have on there is Town Beach.
Only thing.
What?
The only thing.
The only thing. So where we were at last meeting, we had, um, the Farnolds up and discussion on that right here. Hope you guys read the minute, obviously read the minutes, but you, uh, have any questions from last meeting, now that we have a full board? You know, we, the, the town has been in contact with the Farnolds and with the law, with the attorneys, and we are working on this. We haven't came to an agreement, we haven't reached a final settlement or how we're going to officially handle it. But this is in process, it is not something that we've stopped talking about. You know, our goal would be to have something settled and finished as soon as possible, but due to the sensitivity of the nature of what we're talking about, um, some things take time. So. Did anybody add one?
Well, I think as part of that meeting, what we're talking about, I mean, we want a, a plan going forward as far as, as far as how it's going to be handled, people going in, getting in and getting out, and I think the challenge right now, Ellen and I sat down with the rec department, the police department on Friday to kind of chat about and start thinking about how we could potentially do something, and no matter what we do, it's going to cost money.
Which we don't have.
Which we, well, yeah, I mean, whether it's having somebody monitoring, standing there, you know, making sure that, I'm not even, we were talking, I don't think it would have to be for more than a year or two to get people just used to the fact that, hey, somebody's here watching, but to do it the same way we've been doing it for the past decades, it's just, it's not going to work. The signs aren't working, the, just trusting people to have, you know, Nottingham permits.
And then the difficulty will be actually finding the person to do that, I mean, the rec department hasn't been able to staff it with a lifeguard to monitor the beach. For all these years, we've been relying on, you know, a 16-year-old on a very limited part-time basis. So it's a matter of, you know, figuring out how much the cost is going to be to staff somebody to maintain the gate. In which department's responsible and what their authority is going to be, is it strictly just to maintain the gate, the in and out and the opening, the closure of the gate, or is it to look at the, the bigger picture as a whole and maybe have some beach monitoring enveloped into that responsibility as well? That way you deter some of the issues that have been prevalent down there, whether it's, you know, smoking or alcohol or dogs or.
Of people just leaving the beach and going to private property.
Correct.
And then the other thing that we've put them aware of is there's another property owner, or owner, for part of that property, so it's not just one property owner that we need to.
That's not true? Okay.
Tax guy, I'm sorry, not you.
Well, okay. That's, that's part of the problem.
You can ask the third party you're talking about and they'll tell you, you know what I'm saying right now.
You should have.
There's only, there's only one other party involved and that's us.
Something that we did when we built our house, we did subdivide off, so there, you should have a, it should be right in your planning and zoning or records.
So that was my other question, is why, we're paying for that stuff to be kept up to date, right?
The tax maps? Yes, we are.
That's going really well.
But it's as good as the information we're feeding the map company, so it's a matter of whoever, like when those planning, when those site plans and everything else, not the site plans, but, um, when the subdivision plans and everything are recorded at the registry of deeds, it is a prompted matter of us updating the mapping company, they're not out there just waiting and combing through the town records to say, hey, there was a lot merger or a boundary line adjustment, we have to prompt that information, so.
So we have a lot of catching up to do.
We do have a lot of catching up to do.
Which all costs money, which I think we cut out of the budget.
Well, no, I mean, it's, it's all part of, you know, a clerical position within the town.
But they need to prove the warrant article. That's what it was, the five year, is that what you're talking about, cutting that out of the budget?
I can't remember now. But anyway.
Went way too long.
Regardless, the, we had a, I mean, it was a long meeting and, but, you know, as far as coming forward with a plan, I think it's, it's going to take a lot of time and it's going to take money.
Have we heard anything back from the insurance company?
Yes, I spoke with a claims handler at Primex on Friday. Don Farnold was nice enough to forward the information on the duty of care and what the state actually has in place for public use of private land. So it's not something that's unfamiliar to Primex and we're hoping that as we work toward coming up with some type of a licensing agreement for use of the access road with the property owners, we can incorporate that language to indemnify some of their liability as well as, you know, be able to, to put it within the town's general liability policy. But we're still working through the details, the issue that we're having is Primex is our insurer, cannot create the document that gives us the permission with the property owner, we have to present it to them in a draft form for them to say, okay, from an insurability standpoint, yes, we can do this, or no, we can't do that, and that's what we're, we're at with the, the town attorney drafting the agreement that obviously was, was drafted and was not able to be reviewed in the last non-public session, so I'm hoping that that discussion will continue tonight and we can give her a better direction of where she needs to be going with creating that document, which will hopefully be agreeable to both parties.
Well, it does make it easier if it's only one party.
Absolutely.
Sending you the.
Hey, John, I'm doing event insurance, doing event helper, 10 years, liability insurance for both commercial and private properties, and they give me policies based on days and times and like this stuff for people's private property to be traveling through, we cover access in and out to get to the place we're going to.
Mind sending that information now?
Yeah.
For future reference so we can look at it.
Yeah, Event Helper's been really good for us.
I think that's similar to what I sent you, Ellen, to the, the.
Like, the town would like to see this taken care of and resolved.
Courtney was able to, you know, the, the other questions that were out there, limiting as to what was going to prohibit the, the rec department in terms of opening the beach other than the access road. And, you know, she did have concern about the swim lines, which they have not purchased them, budgetary constraints. Initially, she estimated that they were going to be about $1,000, I think the quick quote that she gave me on Friday was about $600 for those swim lines, just to put them in place.
She did send something out today, it was a lot, it's a thousand.
It was, it was $1,000, okay. So $1,000 to purchase new swim lines, which we do need to do because the old ones were.
And we need to have somebody install them.
And we need to have somebody install them, correct. In the past, she has done them, but it's been a, a very makeshift swim line, and she's not, she's not, the, the rec department staff is not equipped to be able to put them out, I mean, we should technically have.
Swim lines are the least problem that we have to deal with right now.
Understandable.
Yeah, but it's actually.
It's all relative.
Important because that keeps the boats out of there.
Right, but if we come to the thing, maybe we can find some way to, if it's us, the town or residents or something to.
Oh, to put them out?
To find, to find the money or whatever, if it's needed to be, to get it open. Saying the big picture is we got to worry about insurance purposes on there.
Yes, yeah.
You know, how the access is written, that's on there, how, how to protect the property from, you know, people abusing the rights of when it's supposed to be used, when it's not supposed to be used, people just abusing the rights of the property even when the not supposed to be used, people just abusing the rights of the property even when the times are there for who's not supposed to be on there and people that are on there, I mean, this...
Oh, yeah, there's lots of issues.
Yeah, um, that have to be addressed and done. Uh, again, starting tonight and with the attorneys, which is, is where we have to start, uh, for our own purposes, at least to present something to the Fernalls, to at least get the aspect of the insurance part done. You know, once we get that figured, then we can, I think would be the next step to start figuring about policing policy and stuff like that, you know, how we're gonna take care of that, how we're gonna fund it. Cause I don't think any of us have an answer for that yet, do we? Also, what do you guys just pop out with some great thing?
Hey, guess what, I thought about this.
Electronic gate, key card.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
See, so here's the thing.
It works off your dump sticker.
Which I think was seven thousand dollars or something like that, which is expensive obviously, but it sounds like a great solution, but you, there still needs to be education.
Right.
Somebody down there saying, no, you can't come in, or if you're coming in, you go down the road, access the beach only, please.
But even a gatekeeper's not gonna be able to do that.
Right, right.
Let them in and...
Right, it'll check for resident, somebody would check for residents and that's all they can really do, you know, and the hours.
A whole lot of homework yet to do.
Yeah.
How much money does it cost for a gatekeeper and how many days, hours?
You know, you were in the last meeting, we did have a gentleman that came up, um, and mentioned that, you know, if, let's say the support, there is a lot of support, let me get those, our, our insurance purposes and stuff like that figured out, you know, would it be something where we'd address a warrant article for the town to spend X amount of dollars in order to police and operate the town beach? Then you'd find out the, the temperature of the town, whether it's something they financially wanna support or not. I mean, I feel bad if, if it fails, then the people that were using it is gonna get neglected by the people that are there, I don't think that's the best way to do it, we'd better actually find a line item instead of putting it to a warrant article, but I don't know if that's gonna be the case for this year.
But that, he keeps it down a year from now.
Yeah, that might happen. If, you know, I mean, to get it done right and to do some things right, things take time, you know? If you, if you, if you have speed the way through it, there's a great chance that there's gonna be stuff that's gonna be missed, there's gonna be things that are not gonna be covered, and then we could be having this discussion all over again in two years, you know? And we can't look back and say it was somebody else that should have done this before, you know, this is what happens, this is what we have to deal with, this is why we're here, these situations arise, you know? If you had asked somebody ten years ago, probably wouldn't have been the case, but today's day and age is different, and everybody should be protected and this is how we have to figure it out.
Those free stickers, dump stickers and beach stickers?
Yeah, they worked out.
Just a thought.
But then you get, have somebody police it.
Can I ask why, why there's this drastic jump to have to police the town beach for the twenty or thirty people that are using it? You have somebody sitting at the gate, you have them posting, I'm an average, ordinary citizen who's lived here for over twenty-one years, my child took their first steps on that town beach, both my kids learned how to swim on that town beach, I have seen so many shenanigans and nobody has ever experienced what they've experienced in the last four weeks or six weeks, and especially now, because it was like, oh, everything will be opened as soon as Memorial Day and everything's been posted. I have grown up in this town and my kids have grown up.
All right, so, before we go, hold on a second, I don't mean to cut you off.
I'm sorry, everybody was informally saying towns for this last two hours.
And again, we're gonna turn that around right now before we go any further, this is... Do we wanna open this, the discussion on this, or is this where you guys wanna sit?
Public comment.
You wanna open a public comment on this?
Sure.
All right, we'll have a, we'll have a public comment on the town beach, please come up to the thing and state your name, your address.
It'll just make it easier for the records later, too.
Hi, my name's Catherine Noni, um, thank you very much for all you do, I don't even know how much my tax dollars pay for you to be here every night or if it's even worth it to you.
Technically, none.
So sorry, and I'm so, so sorry, I'm not educated on that. Um, I've gone to one other Board of Selectmen meeting in my twenty-one years, so maybe I'm not the best person to be up here making a statement, but maybe that's also indicative of how important I think this is to people that maybe aren't as aware as I am. So, uh, the, I live at twelve Francesca Way, um, and I guess I don't have to repeat myself because this is all recorded. Um, so, for all these years, um, there's been what I've always just assumed is common practice, very harmless, um, I've walked with people who the prior landowner has spoken with and been very, very kind about it, I've also walked on another side of the property where I've seen posted, you know, more than welcome, just don't take anything from the woods, right, like, we don't want any of our woods damaged. I have spent a lot of years, the first snowfall of the season, I have parked, I, I am the problem, not, I'm embarrassed to admit it, my child is here witnessing this, but I am the problem everybody is speaking about, not, I am the main, I'm the demographic of the majority, okay, there are outliers, but the majority of people who go and just walk down there and have never been told they have not, they can't do it, yes, there's always a sign been posted, but people, it's been common practice, since I've been educated, I've not been down there.
Thank you.
Okay, I do my swimming at Lucas Pond, I go to Stone House, I have plenty of places, it breaks my heart that the people of the town are not able to take advantage of this, friendships are created, community is reinforced, family bonds, there are so many amazing things that happen there, my kids will tell you their core memories have to do with that beach and all of the friends we've made in Nottingham, they were born and raised here and they graduated with these kids, and these kids will always be talking about the days they were at Town Beach, and yes, there's pictures of us being locked behind the gate, okay? That would never happen again with the access because that was kind of like the common practice, the hiking. My daughter, in twenty-twenty, she, uh, that was, she's, she's seventeen now, she was back with her friends and they rode their bikes and they took cupcakes, this was COVID, down to the town beach to have a little birthday celebration, cause you could bike ride, right? And, but there, the police called us, that was our first call from the police.
That was a COVID incident, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know the story.
Yeah, yeah, but that was, I sat with the chief and had a conversation about how common practice, and we talked about that, and that was the first time that ever came onto my radar, bringing this up because there are more people like me than these outlying situations that now have an understanding, ownership has changed, expectations have changed, practices will change.
Right, and because common practice was issued, doesn't mean common practice was correct.
I agree.
So, just, I mean...
So, if you just, did you hear what I just said?
Yeah, I know.
So now, it's very clear, right, that that is not the expectation, and you're welcome to use this property on these very strict, you know, this is, maybe it's what it's always been, but this is the way it's gonna be, and no statement has been quite as resounding as Memorial Day weekend and the town beach now opening. I am not on social media that much, I get screenshots sent to me every now and then, that's why I know that there was this issue coming up, um, and it's something I feel very passionately about because I, I have a history of being part of the problem, and I assure you that most of the people like myself, that are, so many sweet people, they're using it more often than I am, my kids graduated, message received and they really understand it, so my initial reaction is, I can't believe we're talking about policing the town beach for the twenty people that show up when the gates are open, if you have somebody at the gate at eleven o'clock when the gate opens or whatever the posted time is, and they're, you have your sticker, they're following, that person's coming out, they don't have their, their kayaks or their board, they just checked in and went past the gate, they know, oh, sorry, you're not allowed to have water crafts in the water, right? We live in New Hampshire where there are, I was just walking, um, at the Stone Pond and Stone, uh, and there was somebody sitting there and, you know, they say hello, it's a, you go anyplace in the summer, you go to the boat launch, they ask where your boat's been, you don't have to have police cruising up and down.
When we said policing, we didn't, uh...
That it really...
I was just talking about, as much as having, there's gotta be oversight.
Right, and, and I...
The police do go down there and, when it's open.
Oh, yeah!
But it's, it's not, the police definitely wouldn't be doing that, but having somebody...
And having somebody at the gate is very different than handing, uh, hiring a lifeguard, right? There was lifeguard shortages based on qualifications and people not going in there, the qualification to sit in a chair at the gate, I'm sure is not the same as being a lifeguard. Um, there's so much conversation that has to happen, um, but I happened to be here tonight, I appreciate you letting me come up and speak, um, I wanted to give you the perspective of a criminal, um, and I think there are a lot of people just like me, and I see all these young families in the area.
What's gonna be a testament to what you're saying right now is how the Nottingham residents, you know, all of us act upon what's, what's being limited to them right now. If people keep going and breaking the law and keep going over there and start going over the property, even though it's closed and even though it's done, those are the people that are hurting it for you, all right? So it's not the fact that any of us here wanna do it, but, you know, there's rules and standards that are put there, but, you know, when the people start breaking the rules and standards, just because of the good few that were actually obeying it, they're the ones that, the ones that have the problem. I mean, they're the ones that take, take the burden for the people that said, I don't care what these, these rules are.
Sure, I understand.
And that's where we have to sit at the tough decision, you know?
There's always gonna be those people, it's like the teacher who says we can't go out to recess because that one kid, you know, screwed it all up, but there's a lot of different ways to look at a situation.
And that's what we're gonna try to really figure out, to find the best comparable way for that, we can provide safe, uh, family activities down there, have it be safe, have the, the owners feel protected by, and backed by the town for insurance purposes on the access to get there, you know, there's, this day and age is not the day and age of twenty years ago, and it wasn't the day and age when I was there at twelve years old getting my swimming lessons, um, so, we all have a history, we all know about it, you know, I appreciate your response, but...
I spent many, I spent many days there with my mother-in-law who had Alzheimer's and my little kids, and they all, I saw the rules being broken a lot.
Of course.
On the beach, not on the access road, right?
No, but you are, you, I mean, again...
Right, but you see all this and there, there was, I don't think there's ever a lawsuit that's ever been filed, I don't know the history of the property, um, but I, there is this intensity, right, and so now we have to look at this situation, but I hope that you will also look at the majority of what's being used and that is the motivation for finding a solution and being optimistic and not outlying.
And I'm sure there will, there will be a solution and it's gonna come there, it's just when we get there and we get it done, that's satisfactory to everybody that needs to have it. So it's just unfortunate that we're in the situation we are today, but it shouldn't be the situation that's gonna be precedent for the rest of now on.
I know, nobody wants their legacy, nobody on the town, nobody wants their legacy to be the one that took away the town beach, which, you know, survived for sixty-two years, and on another note, everybody's been here too long, but I can't wait to come to the next meeting and learn why we can't just kayak and stop on the beach, like, why can't you just stop on the beach if there's no, like, if you're not even accessing the road, what...
Well, cause it's still off, it's supposed to be off, like, again, I...
I'm not, I'm not sure.
We're setting a precedent that it's off, that it's closed.
It's closed, the beach is closed.
The town beach is closed.
Right, if you just keep it completely closed.
You close it for every purpose, don't leave it...
Close it for every purpose, and if there's swim lines up, you can't go through the swim lines anyway with a boat, so...
Right.
That's really what the purpose is, is for swimming, not for kayaking.
Right, okay, I just wanted to understand the logic behind it, thank you so much, appreciate.
Any more, are we done for today?
Jim Frazier, fourteen Patriots Lane.
Is this about the beach?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure because we...
Bottom line is, what are the minimum requirements to open the beaches here? Liability insurance to get to the beach, is that our main focus? Or are we gonna do everything you guys talked about before we open up the beach?
Pretty much everything we talked about.
Really?
Yep, we need an agreement with the landowner, we need it.
Yep, land bill insurance, yes.
Insurance, um, we need to get the beach set up if it goes that far, so...
I knew we needed the lines, I read that, and then I knew we needed to get the liability insurance, but these other two aspects, as far as someone physically going down and checking it and having a lifeguard, I don't know...
A lifeguard's not a requirement.
Okay.
No, it is posted at swim as your own...
Right, and I've been down and I've read the stuff and I've seen all that stuff.
Did Emmy, sorry, was it, did Emmy donate the, uh, Emmy's border partners donate their, that border party last year, was that a, a service we paid for?
It's normally a service that we pay for, I don't...
Good.
So the real question is then, what are the minimum requirements if we don't have to worry about the lifeguard and we're...
Something different, because what was happening before is not working, and it's not, and I know people feel like it's a recency thing, and it's, it's not, and talking to the rec department and the police department on Friday, I mean, there's been stuff going on as far as people going out there when they're not supposed to, people that are out of state accessing the, um, the town beach when they're not supposed to be down there because Nottingham residents.
But unless the person's law enforcement that's checking these stickers, they have no authority to stop them.
That's, and that becomes a problem.
Exactly.
Trying to figure out who and the powers they can have and...
Have to be a security, private security or something.
Right.
I mean, that's the only way you get around that, I mean, state-licensed private security.
Right, it can't be an eighteen-year-old.
No.
No.
No, it can be trained.
So you see the challenge?
Yeah.
Is that it can't be what was happening before because we need to have something different happening there and make sure that the intent of that town beach is...
I did it on guard for NFL games and everything all over the country when I was active duty, and we had to get licensed, and I actually taught the class for California and Arizona, so, yeah, that's the minimum you have to have if you have any authority whatsoever for an activity, event, or town, so, that's basically it, I guess most people are asking, well, what's take, what is the, the number of things we have to minimally do to open the beach this year, and we need to spell that out to everybody. I mean, bottom line is, things have changed, we're post-COVID, we have to take care of the town, we have to take care of the landowner, so if we can get that out to everybody, these are the things we have to get done before we open the beach to protect not only the town, but the landowner, and that's it. I mean, that's just my thought process of it. I mean, I love to go to the beach, I love to sit there in a chair and relax, but I do know that we're in a different world now, and everybody that I talk to on a daily basis here in town that are, live here, understand that, but I think that, you know, we need to go forward with the great plan like you guys are looking at, make sure we get at least the minimum things in place, and then if we wanna add stuff to it, we're talking about a warrant article, I mean, that really test, will test what people think in this town, how much money we want to invest to have this activity happen, and then we'll have to pay for it.
Yeah, but, I mean, I won't go into details of why a warrant article is terrible to have, but...
Well, I understand, but...
There's a lot of negativity to putting that warrant article out there.
I know, but people need to realize there's a cost associated with it.
Right.
And every other place I've gone to, all the state beaches and town beaches, like, you pay a fee to go in, you know, so, that's why, good luck.
Thank you. All right. Nope. Good.
Just one more.
No, no, Mark, it's not just...
Robin Marshall.
This is gonna take care of the, uh, discussion at the end.
One eighty-nine, no turn back road, so, if the town beach is closed, is there some sort of break we can get from Pawtucket State Park to allow residents, under the circumstances? Anyone approached the state to say, can we get in for a certain amount?
Supposedly the library has those passes.
Okay, that's good to know.
But how many do they have?
I, I don't, I'd have to ask.
And I know that the state said no at one point, I think at, um, one of the hearings that we had with the park expansion stuff, they said no. Um, but yes, the library, in theory, has some passes, the quantity is unknown, you could buy a, well, well, you can buy a seasonal pass.
And a license plate?
You can get your license plate, yep, so, and, but then it's still... Um, but yes, the library, in theory, has some passes, a quantity is unknown, you could buy a, well,
Season.
Uh, well, you can buy a seasonal pass.
And a license plate.
You can get your license plate, you know, so, and, but then it still depends on how full they are.
That's true.
So, you still have to be within that limit.
They fill up pretty quickly these days.
Right, it fills up quickly these days because they have no lifeguards and they keep their numbers down.
Okay, and, um, as far as the shenanigans that are going on, it seems like a lot of the shenanigans they're doing are happening after the town beach hours, which I don't think we, as people who use the town beach, can monitor that. I don't know, people who break the law are still gonna break the law, no matter what rules you have in place. So I don't know if there's a way to solve that, but as far as when you are at the town beach, could we rely on, like, the people that are there, kind of policing? Like, if you see someone smoking, could you kindly say, hey, did you know it's no smoking? And then if they start to get a replay, just call 911 and say, hey, we have someone who's not following laws? I don't know if that's an option that anyone's, because I'm not on Facebook, so I'm not involved in all the
I think it's more the fact that I think people feel uncomfortable being the person to speak up.
Town beach open, speak up, I think more people would be willing to
That's part of, that's, again, that's part of a discussion that, that, you know, that we're having, you know, is situations like that.
Instead of having a security guard, because
No.
When I'm there, there's mostly maybe 10, 12 people, there's
Sure, that's on a good given day.
Hundreds of people.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, if you use it going during the day, it seems to be pretty quiet later in the day, but I haven't seen any shenanigans when I'm there, but I haven't seen any dogs, or I think I have seen a kayak and I didn't realize, maybe the signage, because, like, if you go to the meadows in Northwood, because I'm on the other side of town, people see the gate closed, but you can still go around it, the park isn't closed, it just means the gate prevents traffic from going through. So I think there might be, like this young lady with misconception, she thought she could still use the property even though the gate's closed, because in other places, you can. So I don't know if the signage, if you see a sign that has 100 poles, how many people, it's like Ben with Directions, are they really? Well, but, but they're not gonna read it all, but if it was like a big kayak with a big line over or a boat with a big line, I think a visual might be maybe, I don't know, just throwing things out there, trying to help you out with
No, absolutely, you know, I mean, this discussion's not over and suggestions are always something that are welcome because, you know, again, we, we wanna do the best we can to serve the community, uh, but we also wanna make sure that we're protecting the community at the same time.
And the landowners, you know, obviously, yeah.
And definitely them too.
I didn't realize all this was going on, but I'm not a rule breaker, so I guess I just, I just, I just thought people were, I don't know, following the rules.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, I, I, I think as Joe pointed out to me very early on when I said, I don't mind the cute little ladies who are taking a walk, and he said, well, how do you differentiate? Like, it, it sort of became a free-for-all and unfortunately, outliers are the only kind of people and I have thousands of hours of video footage and photos to show all the people who were outliers and very unkind and very not nice, which I'm happy to share with anyone who doubts what goes on out there behind the closed case. So, you know, I think if there were a few outliers and they were lovely and we knew they were up to no good, like we've talked about here at the last meeting, like, hosting the land was something we resisted, we spoke openly with that in the very beginning when that was suggested to us that we host the property, that we did not want to do that, because, you know, that's not really what, but people just have no respect unfortunately, and we didn't realize what a burden it was placing on the rec department and the police department that the land wasn't posted, because we were essentially giving people access to trespass on your land as well. So, I, I just wanna make sure that's clear, like, if it were a few friendly souls now and again, we wouldn't even fuss if they accidentally ended up our yard, and it's not what we've been experiencing and we've been very open and shared that with everyone, so
Thank you, Don. Alright, um
Yeah, room for one more?
One more.
I have to tell you, I did one of those things tonight that I've never did before, but I've heard of people doing that, getting up off the couch in their pajamas, I felt like that's what I did tonight, but, so, so I wanna say
Thank you for showing up, Gary.
I just wanna say thank you for working with, um, after being on the planning board for almost 10 years and, um, I just had to get up because, uh, I felt that
So this is now the co, public comment section before we go into non-public, just, just put that in there.
Anyway, yeah, but I had, I just had to say that, um, thank you for working with people on room four because I see a need for the town to be open their arms to commercial property and I just, I, that's why I got up off the couch dirty from work and then, uh, so I'm telling you that. But also, uh, I think where we are with the beach, this is just my opinion from everything I'm hearing and seeing, and, no, um, yeah, once again, we're kinda behind, behind the eight ball as a town. Things were dropped a long time ago, and we also have a, a big issue for respect of the property owners. So, I just wanted to say that, um, yeah, I know that the town has loved that beach for, I know since I've been here, but, um, it's a tough, tough issue and guys, thanks for working on that.
So we are now gonna go into our, uh, our end of the, I mean, since we're there anyways, right, the public office. Is there anything left before we go to non-public? Anybody have anything else they wanna say about anything?
Just a recycling center.
What about it?
I just, I don't want it to close, and there's a rumor, I'm not on Facebook, but people send me things because they know I'm on Facebook. I had actually your name attached to it and saying that you wanna have the recycling center closed. So I just wanna say
Whatever that person wrote, you can just disregard, because it's definitely just something against that.
As the oldest continuously running recycling center in the United States, it would be a tragedy to close that recycling center. I know
Legally, we can't.
It's never even been discussed.
Okay, perfect, because I'm on Facebook, so again
Yeah, don't believe Facebook, whatever.
I don't need to add a drama, so it's out of my life.
When you sit in this seat, your name gets attached to a lot of things, but that's a different story.
Thank you for attending and asking.
Yes, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Get it straight from the first, thank you.
I make, uh
Just one other thing, it has been running very nice, I've been there the last couple of times and the people, it just seems like a big weight has been removed from the recycling center. And I did sign the petition, but I was a little leery about having it not open on a weeknight later because I, I don't work now, so I can get there earlier, but knowing, sometimes couldn't get there after 6 o'clock, it's kind of nice to have it open till 7, but it seems like, again, as a town, we're not even following the rules.
Something else for us to fix?
I know, but thank you for all your work here.
Thank you.
Alright, do we need to review our action items for next meeting first, or no? Do we have any action items for next meeting?
I think we're just gonna keep Town Beach on as an ongoing discussion until we
Oh, yeah, we need Steve to go. Don't worry, Steve. I make a motion to move into non-public per RSA 91-3:91-A:3-Lima.
A second.
Okay, cut the right one.
Al, thank you. Uh, we have a motion, a second to go to non-public, we do a roll.
That's the only one we need?
Yes.
Okay.
Do a roll, call, vote, please.
Hi, Steve Walsh.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Tim Gabriel.
Hi, Ash Rollin.
Good night, Nottingham. Once we, um, leave non-public, we will be adjourning the meeting. And we'll see you in two weeks.